You go, you go.
Linda, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, just my concern is working, thank you. The other meeting is still going on?
Yeah, we're just, they're just starting to come in.
Okay.
See Linda, I have no video, I have audio but no video.
Hang on a minute.
Same with me, Linda.
Okay. All right, good evening, everyone, and we have, oh. Fathers here and Lester, boy, I better get, Father, I better get your name down right here, too, when I pronounce it, my goodness, I don't want to. Let me take it right here, hold on. Here we go. Asfall? Asfall, is that correct?
No, it's actually Father Theodore.
Petritas.
Rides, yes.
Petritas is right, yeah.
Gotcha, thank you.
But you can, you can just pronounce it the way it looks, two pet rides, and I'll answer.
Great, all right. And Lester, good evening, Lester. We'll try to get to your section pretty quickly, Lester, we have to go through some public comments and stuff, but we'll try to get there on time. Let's see, we've got Fred and, not Fred, Melissa, Fred, Donald Lucine, Jeff, we're missing Johani.
No, Johani's in, Marcia's out.
Oh.
And Strat hung up. I'll call again.
Are you sure he will call us again?
I'm calling him.
Oh, you're calling him, okay.
Yeah, I had him the first time.
As I say, hard enough to get Strat the first time.
Yeah, I know.
Well, we have him on, lock him in, what do you?
Lock him in.
We have the same problem with our parish council and Strat.
Oh, yeah. We're not picking on Strat, but he, you know, he's got a track record here.
Yeah.
We're just reaffirming it a little bit.
I think he's come a long way, you know?
I'm better.
And one year, his learning curve has been pretty steep, so.
He'll never like Zoom, but he's come a long way, yeah. Say, Linda? Linda?
Yes.
I still have no video, man.
Yes, I know that. We can hear you, though.
That's fine, and that's adequate, thank you, man.
You're welcome, thank you. He hung up again.
Okay, we're just waiting on Strat and is his number busy now, Linda?
It connects and then he disconnects it somehow. Time number four. It says he accepted.
Linda, are you calling him or is he calling in?
I'm trying to call him, time number five. There he is, yes.
Drop him in.
Yep.
Okay, Strat, you're with us, sir?
Hang on. Ah, there he goes.
You left again?
Nope, he's in.
All right, Strat, welcome.
I'm in.
Don't go nowhere, please, all right? All right, everybody's.
See you in there.
Yeah, okay. Um, everybody's present, so we're going to open the meeting, welcome everyone to the regular business meeting of Reading City Council here on Monday, April 12th, 2021. Um, we are going to open the evening's meeting with the invocation by Father Theodore Petritas, and we will remain standing then for the pledge of allegiance. So, Father, it's up to you first, so then we can stand after he's done, okay? Thank you, Father.
Thank you very much for having me. Am I muted? No, yes. Um, and I appreciate it being somewhat new now to Reading, year and a half to have this opportunity to get to know you all a little bit. And this opportunity, and I really appreciate that we use the various faith traditions in our community to ask God's blessings upon all that we do, so I'm going to, as you may know, Orthodox Christians are not yet even celebrating Easter, we've got a couple of weeks to go, so I'm going to sing one of the hymns that we have in this period of preparation, and then offer the prayer, if I may. Lord of the powers be with us, for in times of distress we have no other help but you. Lord of the powers, have mercy on us. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for helping us to navigate the pandemic and all the other trials that are besetting us at this time. We thank you for these opportunities you give us to work towards unity and cooperation as all of the residents of this beautiful city. Lord, we thank you for watching over our mayor, that all these representatives and members of the city council, our law enforcement officers, our city employees, and all the residents and visitors of Reading. Lord, we ask you to forgive us for the ways that we've neglected to focus on our neighbor, the ways that we've given in to frustration or anger or fear. And we ask that you encourage us and give us the strength and inspiration now to go forward, to serve, to reconcile, to represent, to motivate and to inspire each other, for we are all made in your image and likeness. And may we each day please you and fulfill your will and experience your presence among us more fully. For you are the one who blesses and sanctifies everyone coming into the world, and to you do we give our praise and our thanks. Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, now and always, to the ages of ages. Amen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Father. Um, everyone, if you would please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
The State of America.
And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible. Liberty.
And justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. All right, Linda, when you're ready, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Sepeda Freitas?
Present.
Ms. Guben Hendershitz?
Here.
Hey, Nick.
Mr. Marmarow?
Here.
Ms. Reed?
Here.
Ms. Helnic?
Here.
Ms. Ventura?
Here.
Mr. Walton, President?
Here.
Seven present and none absent.
Okay, we had executive sessions regarding litigation, they were held on March 22nd and April 5th regarding litigation as per the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act Title 65, Section 708. Question A, one and. We have a proclamation and presentation this, this evening, I'm sorry, it's a commendation celebrating National Library Week.
Did I read it?
Yep. Go ahead.
Okay. So first of all, it gives me great honor, pride, and privilege to be reading this, so thank you to my colleagues on council for allowing me to read this. This commendation to National Library, for National Library Week, okay, and it reads, whereas today's libraries are more about what they can do with and for the community, and not just about what they have on the shelves. And whereas libraries have long served trusted institutions, often the heart of their cities, towns, schools, and academic campuses, and whereas libraries serve people of all ages, interests, and backgrounds, providing the resource and space to engage in lifelong learning. And whereas libraries offer equipment and professional staff support to utilize technology, programs, and services, often free or with nominal charges to users. And whereas libraries are a resource for all, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas librarians are information professionals who provide expertise, services, and guidance for patrons to access credible sources and material, making their own informed decisions about the world today. And whereas librarians thoughtfully develop collections and programs that are wide-ranging and explore the diversity of our changing society. And whereas the Pennsylvania Forward Literacy is Power Initiative highlights how libraries and staffs encourage basic information, civic and social, health, and financial literacy, which contributes to greater personal and community success. And whereas America celebrates National Library Week, April 6th, National Library Workers' Day, and the immeasurable contributions made by library workers. April 7th, National Bookmobile Day, showing library services are not limited to their physical location, and Reading Public Library uses two mobile technology vans. And April 8th, Take Action for Libraries Day, encouraging community support for libraries. Now, therefore, the city of Reading recognizes National Library Week and encourages all residents to visit Reading's libraries and explore all that they offer. Bronwyn, thank you for being such an amazing leader and taking our Reading Public Library to the next level, so yay!
Thank you.
National Libraries Week.
Comments, Bronwyn?
It's our honor.
Any comments, Bronwyn, please?
Um, I so appreciate the support of city council and city administration. You know, we don't operate in a vacuum, and all of us together have really, I think, made Reading Public Library move forward by leaps and bounds. And I am happy to say that we will be going totally fine-free as of June 1st. So that's, that's something I've been working for, toward, for a long time. We know that fines can be a real barrier to equal access, so we're going to do a pilot program to see how it goes from June 1st to December 31st, and hoping that that will continue. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Bronwyn. Um, thank you, Johani, as well, for reading that. We are going to move on now to a public comment, and I know we have one live public comment person online, right, Linda, is on board, is that Dominic?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, well, we're going to, before we have Don speak, I'm going to ask that Donna read our public comment guidelines, please.
Okay. Give me a second to pull them up here, and we're ready to go. Okay, here we go, due to COVID-19, also known as the coronavirus, the public speaking requirements have been modified. Public comment can be offered by telephone or virtual meeting application by registering with the city clerk, by noon the day of the business meeting, or in writing through an email to council@readingca.gov, or a letter to the council office clearly marked "public comment." Written public comment must be submitted by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting, till that time, if a comment is submitted, the written comment received will be read into the record. All remarks must be directed to councils of body and not to any individual council member or public or elected or appointed official in attendance. Any comment that is personally offensive or impertinent will not be read into the record. Comments on agenda matters are limited to five minutes in length, and comments on non-agenda matters are limited to three minutes in length.
All right, thank you, Donna, our first live speaker this evening is Dominic Maneri, and Dominic's topic is, what, Linda?
Uh, fireworks and illegal off-road vehicles.
Okay, Dominic, you have three minutes, and the floor is yours. Okay, thank you. My objective in speaking here tonight is to stop or mitigate the use of illegal off-road vehicles and incinerary devices, not just fireworks, but incinerary devices within the city of Reading. My views, past and present. Past, we've gotten to this point because what we've done is we've neglected or decriminalized crime in the past. I'm going to give you examples. Parking, double parking, trash, trash, trash ordinances, and noise, noise ordinances. The point that I'm trying to make here, which brings us to the present, is as we decriminalize and as we do not enforce laws on our books, we escalate. And now we've escalated to the point where not only are we having a nuisance, but we have a health crisis and a life crisis with these two points. I give you my opinions on how we arrived here. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't offer remedies. My remedies are such. The easiest way to avoid a problem is to be proactive so that the problem doesn't come around. And what I'm asking council to do, I'm asking council and the administration is to avoid the problems before the event, vis-à-vis public relations. That means newspaper, press, TV, radio, community centers. I'm also asking that they, that you folks legislate on a local basis and a state basis by lobbying, 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 and negotiate the position that Reading has relative to protecting our citizens from these two offenses. Secondly, should we not be able to mitigate, I'm asking to enforce, enforce the laws by issuing citations, using cameras, using technology, and by funding. You cannot mitigate or stop the problems if you don't fund it. So, we, I want you to realize the point that we, that I take as a citizen is not expressing myself. We have an obligation to solve these problems. And failure is not an option, I know that's a cliche, but we are not the lawless Wild West in the city of Reading. Criminals cannot, should not, and should not be going forward to keep our community captive. I have neighbors in their 80s that lived in this city their entire life. Last summer, they were afraid to come out on their front porches because we had illegal motorcycles, illegal, illegal motorcycles, and illegal incinerary devices coming up the sidewalk. We had explosions, not only on the 4th of July, but this year it escalated to a month before, a month and a half before, and a month and a half later. And in closing, what I'm going to suggest to you, only you folks can stop it. Only you can stop it, and the only way that you can fail is by stop trying. We have a problem. We have a city council, we have an administration, and I think it's incumbent upon you folks and the administration's representative to not let this problem progress to the point and greater to the point than it was last year. Lawlessness just dictates more and more and more. We have to stop it. We can't let 15-year-old, 14-year-old kids and, and people in their houses, less than 150 feet, blowing up incinerary devices, it's not just fireworks, they're blowing up, they're blowing up dynamite, small sticks of dynamite within our city. There was a case in California where a house blew up, two people died. If that were to happen in our city, that would take out a whole block, maybe 50, maybe 100 people. We lost somebody to a death over the ATVs last year. We've had physical violence done to the, to a person that struggled. We have to stop. And so with that, I'm sure I used up my three minutes, I want to say thank you, and I'm going to say, please, 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 take action to stop this. Use the, use the media, stop it, stop it, stop it before it starts. Just reduce it and then use the law to stop it. Fund the law, and please, I, I can't express to you enough. We can't be held hostage by these people. Okay? And I've, I've said my, I've said my three minutes. Well, thank you, Dominic. Thank you very much. If you stick around after. And I'll thank everybody again, and have, and have a pleasant evening. All right, thank you, Dominic. We also have four written public comment letters to be read by Marcia, and after that, we'll give anybody who has an immediate need to comment on anything, otherwise we'll defer to the end of the meeting. But Marcia, if you would, please read those items onto the record.
Actually, I'll be deferring to Councilwoman Ventura, because these individuals are in her district.
Okay.
I have one of them. Hi, good evening. I have one of them in front of me. Um, from Brian Grubb.
Okay, I can pick up on the rest of them after you read the one.
Okay. All right, so my name is Brian Grubb, from 229 B, North 14th Street. I recently sold my home in Mullenberg Township to downsize and prepare for retirement. I purchased my condo last May 2020, I moved into my condo in September. I want to express how disappointed I am with sacrificing my home to move back to the city. The allowable disruptions of loud music blasting throughout the neighborhood and on the mountain is alarming to me. I have made several calls to the non-emergency number concerning the music blasting at the pagoda. The problem continues. I cannot believe that the city has not resolved this continued annoyance. I have been reporting these instances since last fall, yet it has gotten worse. I can guarantee if the, if the council and mayor lived in my neighbor, something would be done. The pagoda has signs posted about park hours, however, there are tons of cars at the lookout after hours. Will we continue to allow these citizens to taunt the police and disrupt the lives of other city residents? When will something be done in the entire city with loud music blasting? I'm embarrassed to tell anyone I moved here. I want to be proud of where I live, however, I do not have any authority to clean up the mess we have allowed to continue. Please consider my voice as a taxpayer and resident of the city I grew up in and once loved. Thank you, Brian Grubb.
All right, thank you, Melissa, and then Marcia, you have three more letters, correct?
Yeah, and actually, several of the letters are also from Mr. Grubb, too. If I can have council's permission to read all of them into the record?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so, Mr. Grubb states, I'm 56 years old and grew up in the city of Reading, a city I was once proud to live in. A city was non-tolerant of traffic and parking violations when I lived here. I moved out of the city at 31 years old, but recently purchased a condo on North 14th Street and moved back in preparing for my retirement. Since my return to the city, I'm amazed at all the illegally parked cars and traffic violations that are permitted. Each time I leave my residence, I witness these offenses in the city. Parking issues, cars parked without legal tags, inspections, cars parked at yellow lines, cars parked blocking wheelchair access on the corners, and cars parked everywhere, double parking causing obstructions, hazards for other drivers. These parking violations were never tolerated years ago. What changed other than adding parking enforcement cars on the roads? Do they enforce anything other than expired meter or cars parked during street cleaning? Traffic violations, cars making Hollywood stops at stop signs, cars making U-turns in the middle of a block, cars running red lights, etc. Again, these violations were not tolerated years ago, but appear now, traffic violations are allowable in the city, why? Does the current administration see these issues? That, can anyone realize the revenue which will be generated for the city to have a no-excuse policy with these violators? Why do we tolerate this? It's time for us to take back control of the city and return the city to what it once was. I am, want to be proud to live here and make a difference, providing my feedback. I'm hoping someday Karen residents see improvements and change with any elected officials. Thank you for hearing my voice, Brian Grubb. Okay. Uh, the next is from David Hall, 217 North 14th Street. Last night, music is again being played at the pagoda on both weekday and weekend nights. It has been over 10 years, the people living around Mount Penn have suffered with interrupted sleep, sometimes for hours, due to loud music, modified cars and motorcycles racing on druray and skyline drives. These people are drinking littering, littering, and breaking the laws repeatedly with apparent impunity. Over the years, our civic leaders have promised gates, private security patrols, enhanced local police patrols, yet the problem persists. There is no good reason for skyline drive to be open after dark. It is the best solution considering our current reality. Please do something to finally resolve this issue. Okay, next is from Marge Lawler, Vice President, Mount Penn Commons Homeowners Association. Mayor and city council, the residents of Mount, Mountain View Commons condominium are once again plagued with the music at the pagoda. It's outrageous, loud, and intolerable. We've been told repeatedly the solution to ending it was being implemented. When? We're tired of calling police and being told to call the mayor's office, to what avail? Nothing is done to stop it. We are a quiet community and simply asked to remain such. Thank you. And then the final is from Brian Grubb. Several of my neighbors have contacted zoning in regards to a hazardous business being run in a resident. At this time, nothing has been done. The business Halo's towing includes painting cars and car repairs inside the garage of a condominium building. Late-night towing of the cars in and out of the garage occurs on a regular basis. The noise of the toes are the least of everyone's concern, however, the fumes of the combustibles being used inside the building are a major concern. What does the city zoning apartment allow us to continue? They were made aware of this. They were made aware of this on several occasions. As a taxpayer and resident, I am concerned for the safety of myself and neighbors. Please call this issue as soon as possible before a catastrophic event occurs. Thank you, Brian Grub. That concludes the public comments written.
Okay, thank you, Marcia. Again, council, this is a time now, if there's any need for an immediate response to anything. Otherwise, um, we can wait till the end of the meeting to respond. I'll, I'll just make a brief comment. We, just as recently as tonight, have been discussing the firework issue. And, uh, we will continue to deal with the, uh, the, uh, motorbike and illegal vehicle issue there and and then the loud noise. There are a lot of quality of life issues. I know the administration is looking to take a deeper focus into that. Um, of my, my meeting this week with the mayor and Abe, I'll see if we can get a little more direction on that and report to council and the public as soon as possible. It is unfortunate that a lot of these things go on. Uh, they take a huge amount of manpower to even begin to try to correct them, but if we don't somewhere along the line, start enforcing them, as the gentleman stated, they'll just get worse and worse. So I think it's a priority for all of us and we'll, we'll make that, uh, we'll make that effort.
Yes.
Continue to focus. Yeah, I didn't want to turn this into a big discussion, but, uh, who, strat?
Yes. I would like to speak up now, but I'll wait to the conclusion of the council because I talked to the individual that wrote those letters and he told me other things that I think should be brought to the attention of council.
Okay. All right. Um, Marcia, did you have a brief comment?
Yeah, very brief comment, but I think it's important for us to be working with, uh, Lowry Alsis because they share the ownership of Skyline Drive and as part of the Mount Penn Preserve, safety is a priority issue. So the Central Berks needs to be engaged. One of the things you'll find is as we start doing enforcement in one area, these individuals and these will be moving to other areas. And I have spoken with you, Colonel Ali. One of the issues, they come in huge groups at special events that we need to look at our ordinance about special events permits not being adhered to. Many solutions are available out there for us to leverage.
Yeah. And again, some of this we can discuss during the administrative report. Donna, I'll go ahead.
Yeah, and real quickly, um, I think, um, I believe Mr. Grub touched on the issue of, um, work on vehicles, cars being done in inappropriate places. I think this is an overarching issue throughout the city. I see it, uh, with garages on, on West Windsor Street, work actually being done on cars on the street. We see it in our one neighborhoods where people purchase houses and then use, use their little garages as commercial garages almost for the kind of thing Mr. Grub is speaking of. These pose not just quality of life issues, but they also pose safety issues with the fumes with in, in, in nearby where I live with, um, things like antifreeze and automotive transmission fluid, uh, oil, used oil being dumped on the streets that then mixes with the water and runoff. Um, I think this is something, this particular issue overarching is, is something that really needs to be addressed by the city for a variety of reasons. So, um, I'd like to make that a priority for a future committee of the whole meeting to discuss, to discuss that issue.
Okay, thank you. All right. Unless there's something pressing at this time, um, relevant to comments, I'm going to move on to the approval of our agenda minutes. And again, these issues can be brought up later in the meeting if need be. The first, uh, regarding the approval of our agenda and minutes, uh, the, the, the minutes include our March twenty-second regular meeting and approving the summations of discussion from the April fifth Committee, the whole nominations and appointment, uh, committee meetings. Um, but the approval of our agenda and minutes, we also approve our consent agenda legislation. The first item is an award of contract for the purchase of a twenty twenty-one Ford E four fifty A E V ambulance to specling emergency vehicle sales and service, Scottsdale, PA, in an amount of a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars. Uh, the next item under the consent agenda is a resolution authorizing the disposition of records as set forth in Resolution one thirty-four dash two thousand and nine, adopted December fourteenth, two thousand and nine in accordance with Act four twenty-eight of nineteen sixty-eight, the retention and disposition schedule for records of Pennsylvania municipalities for all information technology system slash server backup tapes from twenty thirteen and earlier. The next resolution is authorizing the disposition of records as set forth in Resolution one thirty-four dash two thousand and nine, adopted December fourteenth, two thousand and nine in accordance with Act four twenty-eight of nineteen sixty-eight, the retention and disposition schedule for records of Pennsylvania municipalities for the twenty thirteen accounts payable invoices. And then the final resolution under the consent agenda is authorizing the execution and submission of a Pennsylvania D C E D Keystone Community Program, Communities Program Development Grant for the Reading Downtown eight hundred block of Penn Street South Courtyard Improvement Project. So, uh, council, that, uh, as we approve our agenda in minutes, we will also approve those consent agenda items. Uh, is there any objection at the, uh, at this point to approving, uh, the agenda and those consent agenda items? All right. If not, they stand as approved and we will move on to the, uh, next section of our agenda and, uh, our administrative report. Uh, welcome the Honorable Abe Amoros, and I don't know if Frank is participating as well, uh, but good evening and welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening to all of you on council and the general public as well. Last Tuesday, the mayor welcomed the Secretary of the Department of Community and Economic Development, Mr. Dennis Daven to the city of Reading. He was joined by his executive deputy secretary Neil Weaver and, uh, special assistant Michael Gerber, along with Fatty Aholma, our regional director for D C E D. Uh, also attending the meeting were Jamal Abadallah, our Director of Community Development, Jamar Kelly, our Director of Finance, and Frank Dembowski, the Chief of Staff to the mayor and myself. And, uh, we basically discussed some of the wonderful projects that are taking place downtown along through the entire city and also identified resources at the state level. The secretary has directed several members of his staff, including the Director of the Governor's Action Team to respond to our requests for more information and possibly partnering with them on some grants and some projects as well. So we're really excited about that opportunity. And it's something that, uh, we've been working on for quite some time. So we're very pleased to have received the Secretary of D C D last week. The mayor also coordinated with the Fire Department on the wonderful state championship of Reading High. Uh, we escorted them to the Goggle Complex after the state championship went on the twenty-seventh. And we once again want to congratulate the players, the staff, and the entire student body for this remarkable achievement. Frank Dembowski, the mayor's chief of staff, also attended a virtual public hearing uh, for the Pennsylvania Senate and House Democratic Policy Committee on abandoned and property conservatorship, the effect of blight on neighborhoods and tools to erratically, uh, blight, which is something else that we discussed with the secretary last Tuesday. The mayor also provided a letter of support for a transformative national infrastructure plan that addresses communities and their twenty-first century priorities. In the letter, we asked that the funding uh, is needed to support clean water, clean transportation, clean energy, natural infrastructure, reducing waste, healthy schools, accessible broadband, and also the return of passenger rail service to Reading. And throughout March, uh, the mayor celebrated Women's History Month at City Hall and several departments. We had two wonderful celebrations at City Hall and one at Public Works as well to accommodate all of our female employees who work for the city. Under community development, uh, the C B G pay year has opened, which means that the community development will continue to receive funding request applications through June thirtieth. Criteria for qualified applications are stipulated to meet the mayor's priorities for improving the city, its five-year consolidated action plan, and other initiatives for energy efficient programs. And, uh, Jamal and the department also met with Albright's Chief Financial Officer and a representative from Metaplex Development regarding multiple initiatives, and those topics included a multimillion-dollar investment to build three hundred and fifty new student dormitories, replacing the existing facility, and the expansion of its athletic center to include electronic sports for students and the neighboring community. And the department also participated on behalf of the administration in weekly meetings with Congresswoman Houlihan's office to develop a scoring rubric to prepare for a federal grant application uh, within the district. And so the application window began on March sixteenth and ended on April the second. I'm also very pleased to announce that the I request mobile application issue has been resolved. Residents can now access the system via their mobile devices. I T has also installed a new email server and staff is starting the migration of settings before email boxes are removed. The property maintenance division will be mailing housing bills this week to rental property owners. After numerous delays in achieving an acceptable document through the lockbox due to M I C R scan line and check digit issues, we have opted to have the payments mailed in-house for processing uh, by the C S C and the Treasury to avoid any further delays. And the Finance Department also submitted its, uh, Public Utility Realty Report for twenty twenty, also known as PERTA, on March the twenty fourth. And the Grants Division also submitted an R cap application for the resubmission of the Ninth and Marion Street Fire Station Development Project. The request is four million dollars, a little over four million dollars. And, uh, we also discussed this with Secretary Daven last Tuesday as well. The Reading Fire Department Tower Ladder Replacement Project is underway and the apparatus is now on the assembly line and slated for delivery in late summer of twenty twenty-one. Uh, under Human Relations Commission, we have addressed significant backlogs in terms of the rental assistance program. I'm happy to say that that program is moving smoother now than it was in the past, and we've addressed some issues. And we've also had a meeting with three magisterial district judges, and we also have a follow-up meeting with them to, uh, report on our, uh, progress on Wednesday. Uh, we already congratulated the library system for National Library Week and, uh, the, the public library lighting project is underway. That's Electric is on site at the main library, converting every single light fixture to L E D. Uh, the public library has also received twenty thousand dollars for STEM programming from the Home of Orphans of Odd Fellows. And this is year two of a five-year, one hundred thousand dollar grant cycle with them. We're very pleased with that. And the Reading Public Library also continues to look for grant opportunities to continue providing programming and services to the community. And in the past five weeks, we have actually applied for seven grants. Many of you, uh, have seen the results, um, as, uh, the, the results from the Police Department's Operation Seats Fire on various occasions. I just want to go through those very quickly again. The March seventeenth detail resulted in the following arrests and violations. Had eleven probation parole violation arrests, fourteen misdemeanor arrests, four felony arrests, forty-seven traffic stops, nine subject stops, twenty-five traffic citations, and two firearms seizures. The work will continue. And, uh, we've had several other arrests and firearm seizures, uh, since then on March the twenty-fifth. Uh, many of you already know that, uh, in fact, the chief gave an update about this last week, that the gun buyback program is scheduled from ten AM to two PM on April the twenty-fourth, parking lots of Segunda Iglesia Tesalónica, located in nine twenty-four Greenwich Street and Saint John Missionary Baptist Church at four thirty-six South Seventy. And the Police Department also met with Auburn University to finalize details related to the Police Academy move to the Upland Center in June of this year. And also, uh, the Police Department's intended shade and patrol officers attended teen takeover at the Olive Club in Pandora Park. And this allowed officers to engage with our youth by playing basketball and participating with them in other activities. Lastly, the Public Works Department resumed street sweeping efforts on March the eighth. And if residents have not already, please check your block's posted schedule to avoid being ticketed by the Reading Parking Authority. The Public Works has also, uh, resumed yard waste collections as of March the tenth. And, uh, we have also increased pothole remediation efforts due to a change in the weather. The warmer weather has allowed us to increase cleaning and, uh, clearing efforts of city parks and trails in preparation for increased spring and summer usage. In fact, we have a potholes, uh, meeting, uh, a follow-up meeting scheduled for tomorrow afternoon. And lastly, the Public Works has restored all basketball rims to city playground, which means that future state champions can now be on our playgrounds this summer. So, uh, that concludes our report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, Abe, thank you very much for the report. Any comments or questions, council, for, uh, the managing director? All right. Thank you, Abe. We are going, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Lucy.
That's okay. Um, excellent report. Thank you, Managing Director. We always repeat, appreciate the comprehensive updates of the hard work the administration, the mayor are doing. Um, you mentioned briefly a letter of support that, uh, the mayor signed. Could you just speak a little bit more as to what that letter was for?
Yes.
To whom?
Oh, yes, yes. Thank you, uh, for, for asking me to clarify that. That letter of support was to, uh, Congresswoman Chrissy Houlihan. She has asked us to provide priorities in terms of federal funding. Obviously, this administration is, cares deeply about third-class cities, including Reading. And, uh, we had a list of priorities that we wanted to share with her office that she is taking to the administration as well. And I'm really hoping that at some point we can even invite the president and his staff to come to Reading to see the progress that we've made as a result. He's strategic.
Managing Director, that's excellent. Of course, we would welcome the president, but in the meantime, can I request a copy of that letter to be submitted to city council so we can make sure we're, uh, realigning with the mayor's priorities and, and the pillars?
Certainly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other comments, council members? All right. If not, again, thank you, Abe. We're going to move on to the report of our city auditor. Uh, good evening, Maria, and, uh, welcome.
Uh, thank you, Council President. Good evening. Uh, the first item on my report is the, on the day on the two thousand twenty audit. The two thousand twenty municipal annual audit and financial report has been completed by our external auditor, Herbany Company. And this, and this is for is currently show and an adjusted journal fund deficit of six hundred seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars. On March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, this report was filed by this, with the state by Michael Cooper, the city controller. The second line item on my report is, uh, two thousand twenty-one estate motor license revenue. On March thirty, two thousand twenty-one, the city received one point nine, one, one million nine hundred seventy-six thousand, four hundred seven dollars, seventy-two cents in revenue from the Commonwealth O P A for the city liquor fields motor license form. And also March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, this account has a balance of a million, three hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars, eighty-seven cents. This revenue is restricted to be used for costs associated with construction, reconstruction, and maintenance for local roads, streets, and bridges. The major part of this volume is the carryover from previous years. And due to the pandemic, some of the paving project for two thousand twenty-one are completed. Uh, if we look, uh, the chart that is listed on my report, uh, we can see that the, the, we exceeded the budget expectation by fifty-five thousand dollar, eight hundred and twenty-seven and seventy-two, and seventy-two cents. So we budgeted one point nine million, where we see one point nine seven six. This, and the third line item is they eat the earning income tax and not days outdated of two thousand twenty, twenty versus two thousand, versus the fiscal year two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one versus fiscal year two thousand twenty. The majority of this revenue for the E I T prior is collected during the first quarter of the year. For the current fiscal year, the city budgeted seven point four million and also December thirty, March thirty-fourth, two thousand twenty, four point, four million, four hundred and thirty thousand, sixty-one dollars, forty, forty cents in revenue has been collected for this line item. After reviewing the revenue collected during the first quarter of two thousand twenty, the city collected one million, fifty-one thousand, six hundred six dollars, fifty cents more in two thousand twenty compared to two thousand twenty-one. As a result, our finance director, Mr. Kelly, is working closely with P F N. We got in regard, regarding an updated detailed report, which will be presented to the administration on city order. The last, uh, like I don't, my report is the traffic fine motor calls. The fine motor calls revenue is the money that the city received for parking violation ticket given by the city police officer, which are collected by the Reading Parking Authority. For the fiscal year two thousand twenty, the city budgeted three hundred forty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty dollars in revenue. On my report date in November ninth, two thousand twenty, I stated that the city has received one hundred thousand from the Reading Parking Authority for this line item. Most recent, on March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one, the city received another check in the amount of ninety-two thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars. That has been accrued, which has been accrued to the fiscal year two thousand twenty. That's been saved in two thousand twenty. That's been saved. In 2020, the city has collected a total of $192,475. And then, and the year ended with a negative variance of $155,005. In comparison with the fiscal year 2019, the negative variance of 2020 is greater than 2019 variance by $92,413.11. This is my report for tonight. I'm open for any question you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Maria, for the report. Council members, any comments or questions? All right, if not, again, thank you, Maria, for the report.
Thank you.
Move on to the next item on our agenda. That will be our report from Department Directors, Boards, and Authorities. We have with us this evening Lester Kissinger, the City Arbrist, to give us an update on the Shade Tree Commission. Good evening, Lester. The floor is yours.
Good evening, members of City Council, Mayor Moran and the administration. I'd like to start off this evening by introducing myself and members of the Shade Tree Commission, who might be on the call. I'm not too sure who is attending this evening. The Shade Tree Commission is made up of four members. The members being David Har, Thomas Ryan. We have two support personnel objects, and that is John Denick and Jeff Thompson. And then we have a Councilwoman Reed, our council liaison to the commission, and Kyle Zebra, our operates, Public Works Operations Manager, who also assists when needed for various different functions. My name again is Lester Kissinger Jr., the City Arbrist and the Shade Tree Administrator. I've been employed with the City of Reading for the last 10 years. I'm an International Society of Arboriculture Certified Arbrist and Pennsylvania Certified Pesticide Applicator. I'm here this evening to do this presentation on behalf of the commission for their annual report to City Council. First, I'd like to start off with a brief history of the city's urban canopy. There's approximately 7,000 shade trees in the City of Reading. It does not include any of our parks. The City of Shade Tree Commission was established in 1973 to manage the city's tree population. The Shade Tree Commission is responsible for implementing the Shade Tree Ordinance through volunteers who are stewards of the urban forest. Our mission is to provide an abundant and healthy urban forest that will enhance the quality of life for everyone. The current goals of the commission are to guide and regulate the orderly growth and development of our vegetation on or near public areas in accordance with the Shade Tree Ordinance with long-term objectives and principles, standards that deem beneficial to the interest and welfare of the people of the city, to protect the characters and socials of economic value of both private and property, to preserve and enhance the visual characteristics and energy, to restore, and so far as possible, a healthy, natural environment, including but not limited to photosynthesis, underground water stability, surface runoff stability, the reduction of noise, the filtration of pollutants such as ozone, sulfur dioxide, particular matter, and the program, degradation of animal life. Some of the recent accomplishments achieved by the commission, the planting of 70 to 100 new trees a year. The proactive stance to continue to combat Emerald Ash Borer, a bore that, that attacks our frackless trees, ash trees. This has started in 2006 and has progressed ever since then. We currently have 250, 50 ash trees treated throughout the City of Reading. That is only street trees. We have 100, we have removed 100 ash trees. There's 20 to be removed in the coming months as they're, as they have curated and are no longer suitable for treatment. The ongoing efforts to suppress spotted lanternfly following the recommendations set forth by USDA and PDA, the acknowledgement to participate in this year's upcoming 37th, 37th year award for the Tree City USA for its accomplishments to its urban forestry by gearing up cities and towns across America since 1976. This program is credited for its nationwide movement and providing that just for communities to manage and evolve our major park's tree canopy, which included the improved aesthetics and overall health to improve the trees by raising all the canopies, removing dead or dying, dying trees, eliminating branch failures over the pedestrian walkways. These projects costing over $456,000 over the last two years has established the groundwork to continue moving forward and having our parks on a continuous, continuous cycle prunes and replants every five years. The parks, parks projects included all of our major parks. They have been completed. We are now currently working on some of our smaller parks. A plan to continue to address the rest of our park system in a schematic process. Training of our staff continues to improve the importance of tree health, pruning practices, and proper felling procedures during the removal process. This practice has been, has allowed us to perform various jobs in-house, including storm cleanups and removals, both during and after hours, at a savings of approximately $292,000 to the city over the last two years. Have a budget that provides funding to be used to improve the condition of our urban forest within the City of Reading, whether it's by pruning or removing hazardous branches to enhance streetlights, to clear signage and traffic devices, and to elevate any concerns that might be over the sidewalk and carways. Perform removals that address all deadwood, diseased, or hazardous trees and plantings, which will also take place with this funding. One thing in particular to note is that the residents appreciate is that someone, some of this funds goes to establish and ease the financial burden of the residents on having to replace their own trees. The commission utilizes the funds to replant empty tree pits through our adopted tree program, program under which the commission provides the property owners with a free tree to plant curbside or on their property. The commission continues to strive to improve public safety by removing potential hazards, increasing lighting, and clearing traffic signage and devices. We are increasing the health of our, our, our urban forest through replacing unhealthy trees with healthy trees, pruning to improve the growth and vigor and increasing the number of trees by replanting empty tree pits. This will continue to improve the urban experience by providing all the benefits that are associated with the strong and vigorous urban forests. In closing, the commission is addressing several, several issues which are constant with the, consistent with the Arbor Day Foundation in efforts to help further the conversation, conservation movement, providing relief from the heat associated with urban conditions, improving the aesthetic appearance of our community, thus helping to dispel the concept of urban blight. Educate the community by providing guidance and information on the importance of trees and how to plant trees correctly. Instill a sense of community pride in our neighborhoods by involving the residents in tree plantings and by promoting neighborhood ownership of the trees. With that, I'd like to thank City Council, Mayor Moran, and the administration for their continuous support in helping the Reading Shade Tree Commission achieve their goals.
All right, thank you, Lester, for the report. Council members, any comments or questions at this time? Okay, go ahead, Marcia, then Lucy.
First of all, thank you very much, Lester, for being such an advocate for our urban canopy, because if we didn't have that leadership at the city level, a lot of people don't understand the importance of caring for our urban forest. And even though I know it's a challenge, and I know people have a long way to go as far as understanding their responsibilities, I think we've made some real progress. So whatever we can do, I have one question for you, though, and has to do with our actual forested area and the amount of deer that we now see populating that area and how that's really impacting on the growth of new trees. Is there anything we need to be concerned about there?
No, not at this time, especially up on Mount Penn. A lot of the deer damages on the smaller saplings, not the saplings that have actually turned into mature trees. So the deer population is helping keep some of the unwanted invasive species under control as well.
Yeah, I've just noticed a whole lot more deer, and especially on the Never Sink area. So it's sort of welcome. It's sort of friendly to be able to see them in the evening and in the morning. But I just wondered how they were affecting the trees. So thank you.
Okay, Lucy.
Hi, Lester. Thanks for the update, especially in regards to the ash borer and the spotted lanternfly, which are two enemies. And, you know, it's important to continue to educate our community as to what they can be doing to help combat the measures of the trees that we're losing by these invasive species. I think if anybody's been walking through the streets of Reading from the river up to the mountain recently, they've been seeing the beauty and glory of what our urban canopy and forest can, can, can do. Our city is absolutely breathtaking, and thank you to you and your team. Possibly, we might be looking towards some technical assistance from you and, and the commission. There's been some conversation around urban food forest in District One. We'd love to have you and others advise the community that is interested in placing something like that in our city. And please continue the, the good work that you are doing. Thank you for doing it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, any additional comments, Donna?
Yes, and I'm, I'm happy to serve as liaison to the, to the committee and certainly do it with a lot of thought of my predecessor in opposition, John Slupko, who planted 700 plus trees throughout our city and was one of our colleagues on this board. I'll request again, and I know that your, your meetings are set, but it is very difficult for any of us who sit on council to attend the six o'clock Monday night meeting, because we're, we're always engaged here at City Council. So I know that the one meeting I did go to, I did ask if you guys would reconsider the timeframe. I will respectfully ask that again, because I certainly would like to be far more engaged. And it's one thing to read minutes, but it's a whole lot better to be there. And again, understanding that we sit as ex officio, we don't have, we don't have votes. But I think Shade Tree Commission, your urban forest is so critical to, to not only our aesthetic well-being, but our health and, and, you know, mental well-being. And the City of Reading has always been a leader in shade trees, and I hope we continue to be that. And that being said, I look forward to Arbor Day, April 30th. So we, we look forward to those celebrations and hope we can move forward with that and have a lot of people observe, observe those celebrations, City Park and Center Park and other areas. So thanks, Lester. Thanks for all you do.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, Lester, thank you. Some people don't know, I think we reserve about two tenths of a tax mill specifically for the Shade Tree Commission. Just like our libraries, they're, they don't just happen on their own. We deliberately deal with them, and that's why we have so many beautiful trees in the city. So thank you for all the hard work. I can't imagine all the logistics behind maintaining all these trees, but the good work shows up. So thank you, Lester, and thank you to the commission as well.
You're welcome.
All right, council members, we're going to move on to our ordinances for final passage. The first bill this evening is Bill Number 21, vacating a portion of Liggett Avenue and removing it from the city's topographical map as requested by the petition presented by the Reading Housing Authority and recommended by the Reading Planning Commission and Public Works Department. This was introduced at the March 8th regular meeting. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments? All right, if not, Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Motion was made by Counselor Sahelnik, seconded by Counselor Goodman-Hendershitz to enact Bill Number 21, 2021, which vacates a portion of Liggett Avenue and removes it from the topographical map. Ms. Peter Freitas?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman-Hendershitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marmarow? Mr. Marmarow?
Strap.
You are unmuted.
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Sahelnik?
Yes.
Ms. Ventura?
Yes.
Mr. Waltman, President?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Our next ordinance is Bill Number 25-2021, Liggett Avenue Intersection Realignment and Topographical Map Revision. This was introduced at the March 8th regular meeting. Is there a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments? If not, Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Motion was made by Counselor Sahelnik, seconded by Counselor Reed to enact Bill Number 25, 2021, which authorizes the realignment of Liggett Avenue and the topographical map. Ms. Goodman-Hendershitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marmarow?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Sahelnik?
Yes.
Ms. Ventura?
Yes.
Ms. Peter Freitas? Ms. Peter Freitas?
Yes.
Mr. Waltman, President?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Our next ordinance is Bill Number 27-2021, amending the police chief's contract by adding the benefits excluding overtime granted under the current MOU between the city and FOP and any collective bargaining agreement that supersedes or amends the current agreement as he is entitled under the Pennsylvania Chief's Act due to his extended service as a police officer on June 1st, 2000, followed by his promotions to sergeant, lieutenant, and captain, working in multiple capacities for the City of Reading. This was introduced at the March 22nd regular meeting. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Been properly moved and seconded, and are there any comments? If not, Linda, can we have a roll call for this?
Motion was made by Counselor Marmarow, seconded by Counselor Reed to enact Bill Number 27, 2021, which amends the police chief's contract. Mr. Marmarow?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Sahelnik?
Yes.
Ms. Ventura?
Yes.
Ms. Peter Freitas?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman-Hendershitz?
Yes.
Mr. Waltman, President?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Our next ordinance is Bill Number 28-2021, authorizing the acceptance of the MS4 Pollution Reduction Plan for the City of Reading by adding two rain gardens in District Five to benefit the Topahawken Creek. This was introduced at the March 22nd regular meeting. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments? If there are no comments, Linda, can we have a roll call, please?
Motion was made by Counselor Reed, seconded by Counselor Sahelnik, in Act Bill Number 28, 21, which authorizes the acceptance of the MS4 Pollution Reduction Plan by adding two rain gardens in District Five. Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Sahelnik?
Yes.
Ms. Ventura?
Yes.
Ms. Peter Freitas?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman-Hendershitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marmarow?
Yes.
Mr. Waltman, President?
Yes.
Seven nays, no nays.
Our next ordinance is Bill Number 29-2021, authorizing the following: changing median width from 24 feet to 26 feet on the 100 block through 400 blocks of Hancock Boulevard, and on the 800 block through the 900 block of East Wyomissing Boulevard, reducing the cartway width to 23 feet. Changing median width from 24 feet to 28 feet on the 1,000 block through 1,300 blocks of East Wyomissing Boulevard, reducing that cartway width to 23 feet. This was introduced at the March 22nd regular meeting. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments? Lucy?
So this may seem a little complicated, but this really complies with moving forward in a couple of components in District One with the Oakbrook Line, the intended pedestrian and bike safety path. If you are familiar with this section of my district, they truly are boulevards. They are large expanses, and we want to make this part of our city more walkable, more bikeable, and also connect ourselves to the park systems. Schlegel Park, the Schuylkill River Trail, the Wyomissing Park, the Reading the Wyomissing Park, the Reading Public Museum. So some of these aspects of widening, the medians will help with that. In addition to safety, we are hoping that it will eliminate the tractor trailer cut-throughs into this residential area, along with slowing down the traffic, which I know we have heard, we've heard people speaking towards that even this evening. These are all productive ways in which we can address some of those concerns that we hear throughout our entire city.
All right, thank you, any other comments at this time? All right, if not, Linda, can we have a roll call please?
Motion was made by Councilor Sahelnik, seconded by Councilor Goodman Henderschitz to enact Bill number 29, 2021, by reducing the median widths and the cartway widths in the 8 and 900 block of East Wyomissing Boulevard. Ms. Sahelnik?
Yes.
Ms. Ventura?
Yes.
Ms. Sepeda Freitas?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman Henderschitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marmaroo?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Waltman President?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
Okay, that is the end of our ordinances for final passage. We do have only four ordinance for introduction. I'm going to ask the Councilwoman Marsha Goodman Henderschitz to please read them onto the record, thank you.
Yes sir. A ordinance amending the 2021 Position Ordinance by reassigning two police officers from the Patrol Division to the Criminal Investigation Division who will be assigned to the State Police Auto Task Force, fully funded by the Pennsylvania State Police Auto Theft Task Force. B ordinance amending the City Code, Chapter 77, Part 1, Police Department by amending the experience requirements for the position of Captain and striking Section 110 college credits for Sergeant, Lieutenant, and Captain, and reserving that section. C ordinance authorizing the agreement of sale for 313A South 8th Street for $600 after followed its purchasing policy by notifying the surrounding neighbors of the property that the property was available for bid. And D ordinance authorizing the agreement of sale for 423 Schuylkill Venue, Reading, PA, to the Reading Parking Authority for $25,000.
Okay, thank you Marsha for reading them onto the record. We're going to move on to resolutions. If there's no objection from council, I'm just going to ask that we do these both at the same time. The first resolution is reappointing Joseph Amprey to the Ethics Board and the second resolution is appointing John Zabala as a liaison to the Youth Commission. Is there a motion to move them forward?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right, they're probably moved and seconded, anybody have any comments?
Well, in regards to Joseph, it's good having him back. He brought a lot to the Ethics Board and I'm glad we see him back on air and he'll continue doing a good job. And John, this is John's first appointment to any agency in the city or any commissioner board and that, but he's well-known and he's been involved in a lot of projects here in the city and he'll be a good man to be on that board. Thank you.
All right Strat, thank you very much, anyone else have any comments? If, oh, go ahead Marsha.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Dr. Amprey for continuing to serve the city. He brings a depth of experience and I think we all served on the Ethics Board. And it's, and John, I think he brings his youth, his energy, and his commitment to the city. I was very impressed by the way the first Youth Commission meeting was facilitated. And John wants to be a volunteer for the city, but I think you're going to see him move into other leadership roles. He's just a tremendous asset. So both the Ethics Board and the Youth Commission are real strong components of city government.
Okay, any other comments at this time? All right, if not, Linda, can we have a roll call please?
Motion was made by Councilor Marmaroo, seconded by Councilor Ventura to adopt Resolutions 40 and 41, 2021, which make appointments and reappointments to the city's board and commission. Ms. Ventura?
Yes.
Ms. Sepeda Freitas?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman Henderschitz?
Yes.
Mr. Marmaroo?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Ms. Sahelnik?
Yes.
Mr. Waltman President?
Yes.
Seven yeas, no nays.
All right, that brings us to our final section of our agenda. Any council comments or administration comments, this would be the time. Anybody have any comments this evening?
I do.
All right, we'll start with Strat then Johani, go ahead Strat.
Okay, in regards to, I'm going to call them complaints. All these letters that we received and were read off to us, I talked to all those people and I sort of sympathize with everything they're saying. In regards to the noise, they were told by someone in City Hall that it's not the city's fault that we have all the noise coming down from the pagoda, that that is not city property, it is Laura Allison's, they are responsible, not us. I think that's wrong. I think we talked about this before. We should be working together up there, not fighting each other who's responsible for what's going on up there. Okay? Then the other incident I received concerning noise in 1,100 block of Locust Street. Here's a man in his 80s that can't even watch television at night because of all the loud noises that are going on. He's trying to communicate with the people and the only way they'll listen is when the police get there. After the police leave, it starts again. Now, I guess most of you has heard me say this a million times already. You have a problem somewhere. You take your people that are responsible to resolve these problems and you saturate that problem area until the problem is straightened out. Now, you also hear me say, the greatest deterrent to problems is that police officer, that uniform, and that patrol car. We need to get more policemen into these areas where there's a problem. I know somebody's going to talk about overtime, well, that's too bad. I'd rather pay the overtime than have somebody get hurt. Either that or let's add some more police officers like we had in the past. And I'm not saying this because I was a police officer, but I know what these men are going through. And we have to help them out before one of them get hurt.
Okay.
That's all I have and I hope people understand this.
Thank you Strat, Johani, you were next.
Yes, so I, you know, I'm having to report on collaborative community efforts and on behalf of the San Luis Obispo, Mike Toledo and the Reading Cares Initiative, they have to date vaccinated 3,500 members of our community. And some of the partners included are Reading Hospital, Oakside Care Pharmacy, Reading Housing Authority, Berks County Area Agency on Aging, and the Olivet Boys and Girls Club. And the next vaccination clinic is scheduled for this Saturday, Endora Olivet Boys and Girls Club, where the goal or where they have scheduled to vaccinate another thousand members of our city. So I just wanted, you know, highlight, I love when community comes together to fight a, you know, to fight for a cause. So congratulations to our community and what they do to continue making improvements in our communities and to continue to, you know, help the most vulnerable people of our community. So just, that's it, thank you.
Okay, thank you Johani, we'll go to Donna, then Lucine, then Marsha.
I just wanted to respond to one of the constituent concerns that was addressed to council today in an email regarding a festival of sorts or a spring fling or fair of sorts that was held at the northern end of the Reading Phillies' property over the weekend. I was unaware of it and somehow it escaped my awareness. But I did go to the stadium to check on it because of that concern. And my understanding that it was indeed sanctioned by the city and by the Reading Phillies and proceeds from that particular event partially went at least to the baseball town charities and that the Reading Fire Department was there to create, as they usually are for first responder kind of things. The issue here was the number of people who attended crowded. It was a very small area, you know, if you know the grassy area out there just north of the stadium, there were Ferris wheels there, there were rides there, nice weather, a lot of people were out. It's so great that we're getting all these vaccinations, as you pointed out Johani, that many of us have gotten our first or our second. But to have an event like that with so many people crowded together, I'm told many of them were not wearing the S, it was confirmed to me by one of the folks in the Phillies' front, in New York's front office. I'm a little confused why we granted that okay as a city. We have a lot of other events that aren't occurring because of the pandemic. We know there's a spike right now going on across the country. I want to get out there as much as everyone else does, but this may have been a, this may have been a spreader kind of situation. And especially a lot of the younger people that are not vaccinated, who are not vaccinated. I have concerns about that and, you know, I guess it's hard for me to reconcile how we can allow something like this to happen. And at the same time, we can't even open up our own City Hall with proper procedures. It seems counterintuitive to me, so maybe, maybe I'm missing something. So I'm open to hearing, hearing response on.
Counselor, if I may, this is Abe Amorus, I just wanted to let you know that this was discussed during our daily briefing this morning. The mayor's office had no knowledge of the festival, I don't know where the permit came from, happy to look into it, but just be aware that we were not notified of it. We just didn't know about it, plain and simple.
Well, the fire department was on site, did not have to have some kind of administrative okay.
Again, Counselor, the mayor's office was not made aware of it and we're happy to follow up on it. And you're right, that we don't wish to have any kind of super-spreader events and at a minimum socially, responsible social distancing have been enforced.
And to the credit, I think, you know, the RFOS are concerned about it as well and in retrospect, they're certainly concerned about it. They're going to be speaking with the particular owner of that particular, you know, I don't know what you would call it, fair equipment or whatever, who puts on these particular shows. But, you know, my concern is that city property that it occurred on, because that is our property as the city of Reading. What kind of liability that kind of situation puts us at? And especially now with the spike being younger people, the new surge of the variants. You know, again, I want to be out there too, I get it, I understand it. But it's concerning to me and I was unaware of it in our district and I'm sorry for that, that I was not aware of it. But what can we do to prevent this kind of thing from happening? And it goes almost, again, it almost reaches back to the concept of things going on of the pagoda where people are gathering. And there's no social distancing going on here, if there's multiple cars up there, multiple people in cars, people hanging out. I don't know what the answer is, but this one was particularly, you know, of concern because it was organized and it was benefiting. I mean, I'm glad it's benefiting baseball town charities, but at the same time, I don't want to see our public health at risk or our public safety at risk.
Okay, I think Abe said they're going to look into this and get back to us, so that's good. It's something that, you know, sometimes handoffs don't always go knowingly, so we'll try to fix that process. We're going to go to, was it Lucine then Marsha? Don't jip ahead of Marsha Lucine, if it wasn't your turn. It's Lucine.
No, you tell me Jeff, Marsha, would you like to go first?
I don't know.
That's okay Lucine, I respect you, your hand up.
I don't want to get in trouble, that's all, I'm trying to protect myself here.
Well, I want to begin by just acknowledging that Alvernia has at this point distributed over 500 vaccines for their students, their faculty, and family. Just this afternoon, there was an opportunity where they had openings for the community as well. And as that information is available, you know, I want to just commend them for doing the effort and working towards keeping our community as safe as possible, especially being a university and working with our younger population in District One. And in addition, an announcement, a call for gardeners, specifically for the proposed Oakbrook Community Garden. Yes, it is predominantly for Oakbrook, but if you live in the 18th Ward, Wyomissing Park, Milmott, or really, you know, anywhere else in the city where you really want a garden plot, majority of our urban gardens throughout the city are currently full, which is amazing. They're open, please reach out to the Reading Housing Authority at the Oakbrook location, because we are looking for five more gardeners to open this garden and start the program. There's a max capacity this year for 26 families to have a gardening plot. So again, reach out. I want to just recognize quickly the work of the 18th Wonder Improvement Association, their board members, those who are volunteering their time. A lot of the bills this evening that you saw were dedicated towards some of the major projects that have been in the works over five years. So I want to thank them because what we see moving forward are a lot of community-led projects, which is vital. So thank you to the members of that group that are doing that hard work. And finally, this weekend, I'm very excited to be welcoming some students from Reading High School to come and plant some trees on my property. I hope most of us registered and there was an opportunity as a booster from Reading High to purchase trees, I think I got one of each one of them. And I think it was really appropriate to have Lester present today as well. So thank you to the Reading High students and teachers who are supporting this booster. I can't wait to foster four more trees on my property to add to that urban canopy. So thanks everybody, continue to be safe and remain well.
And Marsha?
Okay, and first of all, I think it's very important to be able to give correct information to the public, so I need to correct something that was stated by Councilman Marmaroo. Indeed, the Reading Police Department and Central Berks are working cooperatively on the mountain. They understand how the jurisdiction lines cross and they are, and have, it's never been a territory issue. The formation of the Mount Penn Preserve even more solidified that working relationship. So what does happen on the mountain is the police do go up immediately when they receive calls from the public and the individuals that have made complaints have acknowledged that when I speak to them. What happens is sometimes the individuals will move from one area of the mountain to the other or they may even move off the mountain to other areas of the city or to other parks that aren't secure. So we haven't obviously solved the problem completely, but there are efforts being made. So I want the public to know that it's not like it's being ignored. And indeed, from my home, I did hear some pretty substantial noise on Saturday afternoon. It sounded like there was a car club, so I, you know, have been communicating with Chief Tornelli and I know the administration is looking at it and what can be done. It's not going to be an easy problem to solve, but we need to be able to be mindful. And I think it was said earlier by Councilwoman Reed, the whole idea is we're having a large number of people gathering. They aren't practicing any of the safe practices, they aren't wearing masks, they aren't social distancing. So that in itself is creating a health hazard that we need to be aware of beyond the noise, some of the trash, some other things that you can clearly see are going on there that are not healthy and they're dangerous to the city. We will work on this problem and continue to keep you updated. So I want to thank the public for their patience. I also wanted to make council aware of an event that I'm aware of through my professional endeavors, working with the Berks County Medical Society. They are having an event at First Energy Stadium that the city is aware of. It's a prescription drug take-back event. It's going to be following all the protocol of social distancing, mask wearing, because it's being manned by both our medical professionals, working with the Reading Police Department and also the District Attorney's Office. and also the District Attorney's Office. There will be no contact, it's a drive-through event, so please, on Saturday, April 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., please bring your unused medications to the site. I want to thank the Berks County Medical Society for taking the initiative, because it's, it's a very well-organized event, and just like we have the gun take-back event, this event is also very important. And then I just also want to be thanking people in my neighborhood and throughout the city that have been really doing a lot to keep their properties springed up, if you may. I see a lot of flowers being planted, people fixing up their front porches, tree trimming going on. It just seems like people are trying to make a difference. What we do need to do now is work for those people that are disrespectful, that are still trashing the city, and I know the mayor is working on that area with the Clean City Coordinator. We need to really back that up, because it really, it's, it's really a form of pollution that we can't really tolerate. So, I hope to see with the cleanups coming up, and just to shout out to the Blue Mountain Racing Club, I know they're going to be helping to clean up Durae Drive again on April 24th. I believe that's also the Great American Cleanup, so a lot of activities are going to go on cleaning up our city, so look forward to them. Wish everyone a fine evening. Thank you.
Okay, are there any final comments from anyone? All right, if not, real quickly, I'm just going to read through our schedule. Next Monday, we have a nominations and appointments committee at 4:00, followed by a committee of the whole meeting at 5:00 p.m. On Monday, April 26th, we'll have another committee of a whole meeting followed, immediately followed by our next regular scheduled meeting. That is the end of our agenda this evening. We simply need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Good night.